All right, if we can, if we can call this meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic which is stand. All right, thank you, everyone. If you would, Alex, at this time, would you go ahead and do roll call?
Yes, Mr. Humphrey.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Okay.
We have a call.
We do have a call, and at this point, hopefully, Michael will be able to join us. You know, it's short order, but because we have a call, and we're actually after the start time for the meeting, I'd like to go ahead and continue. We're at 2.01, which is the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Tony Neal. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ron Roberts. It's been probably moved a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the next item up, we have two items on the consent agenda. We've got 3.01, which is an amended license agreement with the city of Weston for surveying all the Lululeu properties. The Lululeu properties are the properties where the buses eventually will be parked. So just so you know what that is. 3.02, approve HVAC improvement plan. Looks like there's a train amendment 8A, looks like extra fund involvement. And Desi has pre-approved the expense of $4,993,271. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's removed by Tony Neal. Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Here's Ron, second.
Okay, second by Sheila Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone contrary?
No.
Okay, who said no?
Ron.
Okay, we have one no. Okay, so the matter did pass with a vote of three to one. Next item up is 4.01, selection of general contractor for East and Central Hall renovations. Looks like 17.21, 17,217,000. So at this point, Phil, I guess you can go ahead and go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna walk.
Excuse me, I have a question before we move on.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to know the explanation for Ron Roberts' vote, please.
Ron, would you be so kind as to share with us your reason for no vote?
Certainly. In reviewing the information presented, I brought this concern up, you know, probably a year ago, where we secured, we procured train under a separate solicitation and wanted some transparency and understanding on the subcontractor selection process. That's not very clear to me. I don't, it's not very clear to me on the minority participation, who the subcontractors are. That information is not provided. This is quite a bit of a large sum of resources and uses that are going to be expended with Esser funds. And the documentation is just not clear to me, and I'm uncomfortable with it.
Well, William, I don't know what the process is. I'll have to rescind my vote because that's a reasonable explanation to me, and I didn't know that. Okay, so now I want to vote no.
Okay, so at this point, if you rescind the vote, the vote is actually two-two. I guess what we need to do in order to re, well, let me, let me back up for a minute. We actually have two items on the consent agenda. What I would like to do in order to handle the unreadiness on this is I would like to ask for a motion to remove 3.02 from the consent agenda so that we can revote the amended license for the bus, for the bus lot. Are we all agreeable in that process?
So moved.
Okay, can I get a second? Okay, it's been probably moved a second. The 3.01 would be removed from the consent agenda, and it allows 3.01 to be a standalone issue on the consent agenda. I'm gonna revote the consent agenda with 3.101 under there, just to make sure we have clarity on that. Can I get a motion to approve 3.01, which is the amended license agreement for the city of Weston for the surveying of the Lululeu property? Can I get that, can I get that amendment?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ron. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Tony has seconded it. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, 3.01 has been approved on this consent agenda. The item 3.02, what I'm gonna do, because of the unreadiness that Ron had identified, I'm gonna table that issue until the information that he has requested, that we've given the necessary due diligence to get that information before the board so that the questions that he has raised can be addressed. So at this point, 3.02 will be tabled until that other information has been scheduled, brought forward. And at this point, what we would do, because we do, if there's a need for sense of urgency, once that information is gotten, we could either call another special call meeting or we could bring it forward to the next regular board meeting to be able to deal with that. Are all minds clear on, yes, ma'am?
I think we have to vote on that, don't we? We have to say we're gonna table it?
Well, we can as a perfunctory motion, but at this point, if all the information is not ready, then we would not be able to act on it anyway. But for the sake of clarity, I'll request the motion to table 3.02, as Sheila has requested.
So moved.
Okay, we got, we got a motion and a second. The 3.02 would be tabled until the additional other information is forthcoming. Now, Phil, at this point, let me, let me carry through the motion first, that I got a question for you. All those in favor of tabling that item? Bogey?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, at this point, 3.02 is tabled pending the additional other information. Phil, based on the information that Ron has requested, when do you anticipate that information can be available so we can revisit this subject?
And just to clarify, I recall Ron said he'd like more information on which MBE firms and WBE firms were selected. I know that we provided a table that showed the percentages in board docs, but it did not have the which firms they were. So to, to number one, show which firms were selected, and then number two, give more information on the selection process?
Yes.
Okay.
And Dr. P, just a question for clarification. Have those subcontractors been selected yet, or that's still in process?
They've been selected. I don't know if we can back it up and kind of do it again. Jennifer, I'd invite you to, to share insight on that, to answer Ron's question as best you can.
Eric, good morning. In regards to if they've been selected, they responded to the bid solicitation process. So, yes, they've been pre-selected and meet all the qualifications set forth and the solicitation that we provided.
So, so Dr. P, I think with a full understanding of the solicitation process, how the outreach took place, all that information is important that ties to the subcontractors that responded. We need to treat this the same way that we have treated all the other solicitations, notwithstanding the procurement of train and the selection of subcontractors. That was very clear before, and that's not clear right now. And this is, this, we don't want to set that kind of precedence.
Okay. In terms of.
Go ahead, continue.
In terms of dates, I believe we could have this ready for the February 8th regular meeting, which means it would be uploaded by next Wednesday. Jennifer and Randy, does that sound like the right plan? Or do we need to move, is there a reason to move, we would have to move faster?
In terms of procuring the equipment for summer construction, the quicker the better. But if it's, you know, better for the board to just have this be on the regular agenda for February 8th, we can certainly accommodate.
Well, let me, let me be clear. That's fine, but I think the information needs to be presented to the board beforehand so that we don't, we're not reviewing this in parallel on the fly during a board meeting, because otherwise it's gonna get tabled again or rejected. So the sooner we can get that information, the better, or can digest it and have a full understanding of how this took place.
Okay, so the first, the first is, is a good, good eight days before the board meeting, or a week before.
Well, the normal expectation is that board members have information at least four business days before the meeting. So whatever that date is, that would be the appropriate timeframe to have that information available.
If the, if the process is done, I mean, this information should be available already, right?
Yes, we have the information. It will be provided to the board.
So if you want, if you want to provide it sooner rather than later, we don't even have to wait for the four days. You just go ahead and get it to everybody, and they can do their due diligence to look at it, to understand what it is.
Got it, will do.
Okay, are all minds clear on this? All questions out that need to be asked? All right, well, at this point, we're gonna move on the agenda. 4.01 with the selection of general contractor for East and Central Hall renovations, 17.21, 17,000, 17,2 million. So go ahead, at this point, Phil, go right ahead.
Okay, I'll walk through the pre-selection process, the bidding process, what it means to do the best and final bids. Then we'll talk a little bit about general overview of available funds for Prop V work. We'll talk about the root causes of some price overages, and we'll start to look at future projects and then also next steps. The team, the design team, and with Ron Roberts looped in, we evaluated how we selected construct, general contractors for West and the Superior Connector. And we were reflecting on ways to improve. After consulting with KAI, TRI, Ron, we decided to kind of take a different approach this time, which was the pre-qualification process. Pre-qualification means we believe we can kind of weed out bidders who might not be the best, even though they might offer a lower rate, and makes, let the pre-qualified bidders know that they've kind of been finalists and that they can put in a lot of work, because there's a lot of work to put in a good bid, to put in a good bid. So on October 9th, we issued the request for qualifications for general contractors. We received seven responses on November 7th, and we selected four as pre-qualified bidders. Then on November 12th, issued the project drawings for the RFP for the four qualified bidders. Two of those bidders withdrew from bidding in the days leading up to bid day. One bidder said, "We've been awarded multiple bids recently. We no longer have the capacity to provide this." Another bidder withdrew, saying, "Really, the schedule is unachievable, and we just can't make it happen." The two remaining firms, Cosney Wagner and Lawler, submitted bids at the public opening on Tuesday, last Tuesday. On January 19th, we interviewed the two bidders about their proposals. We talked with the bidders about their proposals. We started to identify that there might be some additional cost savings, that the bids came in high. We called council, and we said, "Council, can we go ahead and ask both bidders to submit their best and final offer by 4:00 PM tomorrow?" And she confirmed that we should proceed, that we may proceed. I'll say that, you guys know Marcus Mumy on the, who's on the call. Marcus is our lead from KAI. Marcus is, the person Marcus reports to also confirmed that he's seen this as a common practice among school districts to, as he's seen this as a practice among school districts, to ask for the best and final offer, in addition to council. After review, the selection committee unanimously feels that Lawler is the best and lowest bidder, beating Cosney Wagner by about 1.2 million. I emailed the board the selection criteria on the 21st, that evaluated price, schedule, MWB participation, and references and other measures. We'll, we'll open those up to you. We'll show you how we scored on bid day. On bid day, Lawler had more points than Cosney Wagner, even though Cosney Wagner had a better price because Cosney Wagner's schedule was unachievable. They basically said they would not be finished with East and Central until December of '22. And so we said, "How are we gonna have high school if they're working on both buildings next semester?" And on the scorecard, Lawler beat Cosney Wagner. This was before we asked for the best and final offer. We asked for the best and final offer, and both firms changed their submission. There was improvement on MWB participation. There was schedule improvement by Cosney Wagner, and there was significant price improvement by Lawler. As a result, Lawler's overall bid package is, is still better, and it's also about a million dollars less than it was the day before. It's still over, though. We had estimated about 13 million, or KAI had estimated about 13 million, based on what we knew in October. And this bid came in at about 17,200,000. So that's, that's 34% over what we, what we wanted. So how do we think about spending money when the construction bids are coming in higher than what we feel like we might have budgeted or want to spend? Well, we're in a unique position right now as a district. The main way that we're in a unique position is the Esser funding. Our total Esser operating budget is 28.4 million. And so far, we've only spent or encountered five, just over 5 million of that 28, 28,400. Remember, we have to, to spend some of that Esser III money for learning loss, and that's been budgeted and built into our plan, actually at 50%, when it really just has to be 20% of our Esser III money. And our total Esser money for Esser II and III is almost 45 million. And we do have to spend all funds by September of '24. So the, the primary way that we feel like, that I feel like, that we feel like we can bridge this gap between the overage is to use Esser funds to cover the difference. We are expanding the number of classrooms. We're expanding the, the, the learning space in the building, and we're upgrading the building exterior, the shell. And there are many ways that we fit in with the Esser bowls here. That's not the only way. We could also look at increasing our capital fund tax levy for next school year. And we can also transfer fund balances. Each year, a district, a public school district may transfer a certain percentage of their operating reserves over to Fund IV, the capital account, every year. The district has not done that going back to 2016, '17, and we would have the ability to go back and do that. And what we would be doing is just drawing on our fund balances to pay for this. So there's multiple ways to cover this cost. Esser is the primary way that I'm recommending, that we're recommending, but we have multiple ways to cover this overage. Let's talk about the overage. Unfortunately, it's not uncommon. It, while it's a good time for us to have funds with Esser, it's not really the best time to be bidding on construction. You might have heard about Francis Howell, at their board meeting earlier this month. Their board did approve the construction. It was 91% higher than the amount budgeted. You can Google that and see that this is not an uncommon practice. We were, feel luckier that we were only 34% higher than estimated. On the screen, the president of SM Wilson cites some of the concerns and reasoning why these overages are occurring. Supply chain volatility, transportation and freights, and the high demand of construction. Also, the current bidding environment, to add on to that, in our interviews on Tuesday, this is some things that our interviewees said. "There's no capacity or desire for overtime. Almost everyone says they don't have the labor force, labor force, and they don't want to promise it. In some cases, 25% of the workforce is not showing up on a given day. There's nothing we can do about it, about supply side delays, and starting to become numb to cost escalations." As you remember, one of the bidders withdrew because they had too much business, and they just didn't feel like they had the capacity to do this, which limited us down to just two bidders. If we were, we, we had that balance between finding pre-qualified bidders and also, which limited the number. But limiting the number also means we have fewer good bids to choose from. We also have an aggressive schedule. Meeting the project schedule has been important, but in a tight labor market, that can lead to higher-than-expected costs. You know, one of the bidders withdrew because of the schedule. We want to know that, some of you might remember Kerry Edwards, who was our lead architect, and Kerry's predecessor, who serves on the Friends of Normandy board. But Kerry left in the middle of working with us on East and Central. And we believe that there was not the best, the, the architectural drawings were not complete, and they were not submitted on time in a way that allowed the estimator to provide the best updated estimate. Those, that's another cause for the overage. So we, we think about it from a big-picture standpoint. The, the cost is about 34% over our estimate, but we do have available funds. We do have some other projects to keep in mind. We have the idea of the West Gym Complex to provide additional athletics facilities for our high school students that can be used by students and children across the district. And then we can also look at renovating the first floor of Campus Support Center, expand the boardroom, offer some parent engagement hubs, and professional adult learning spaces as well, that's to keep in mind. So this is, this decision is within the context of other decisions. So next steps, we wait for Desi's approval of the East and Central capital improvements in the Esser III revised plan that we submitted. And I anticipate no concerns there. We finished negotiations with the general contractor. And I'll share with you that we've identified about, we think about $800,000 in additional value engineering savings. So we'll need to sit down with Lawler and see if, how close that $800,000 estimate is. Ideally, that's even, that's, that's high, or ideally, that's low, and we can identify additional savings for the kind of minor, minor-ish improvements that we made to get there. At that point, we think we can get the number down to about 16.4. We'll update the Prop V budget and keep you all in communication there. We'll upgrade, update the source of funds with an increased amount of money coming from Esser. Then we'll finalize, finalize the contract with Lawler. And then we'll finalize the decision on whether the ninth and 10th grade Normandy High School students move off campus on March 1st. That would allow the Central to be completed in December. We're doing a cost-benefit analysis of that. And if we decide not to move the high school students, it's likely that Central won't be finished until more like March. So that's a kind of a big-picture overview. I tried to include as much information as you might need. Are there any questions?
Well, I do have one question. I know that the, the budgeted amount is up to 17,200. What's the amount allocated for contingency on this project?
The contingency amount is, is approximately 11% of each project.
So 1.5, I believe.
What was that again?
I believe it's 1.5 million.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, Ron, do you have any questions?
No questions. I just think Dr. P and the team did a really good job in, with the flexibility of this process, the fluctuation. And I'll just say something a little differently than Dr. P said. It just because, the, the, the overage is due to many, many items being the certainty of the drawings, fluctuation in the marketplace. And we've tried to do a lot of, be, be very flexible to accommodate a bid process that doesn't add to escalation in pricing. So I'm, I'm very pleased with how this process took place, and our guys have been very flexible in getting this done.
All right, Tony, any questions?
No questions. Nice presentation, Dr. P.
Sheila, any questions?
Yeah, I, I agree. This was a wonderful presentation. Phil, I, I got a lot of information that I needed to have, so thanks for that. The, I do have a question around the, the other options. I'm glad you gave us the other sources of revenue for this 5 million. Why did you ultimately settle on the Esser funds?
Esser funds have to be spent by September of '24. There's a ticking clock on that. There's not so much a ticking clock on fund balances. We know that fund balances will sustain us five, 10 years into the future, especially as we look to do everything we can to support our staff and children. But the Esser funds have to be spent. Our, our, Esser plan that was submitted to the, to Desi in the summer had some ambitious goals for spending on tutoring, after-school programming, weekend work, morning work, and summer work. And we're, we're actually having some trouble filling those positions. So I, it's easy to see how we can adjust our Esser budget as well, to adapt that and still easily, easily hit our 20% learning loss goal to make sure we're, we're in compliance.
Okay, and, and my other question has to do with moving the students. Have we found places for these kids? And are, is that, is the delay in construction as important as having the children in a stable environment, as stable as possible? I mean, are they gonna, how is this movement gonna be handled?
I, I think we're trying to figure all those things out, because the initial impression was that we would be able to do the construction while the kids were in the space. And so now that we have companies that are frankly not comfortable doing that, we're trying to weigh the impact of moving off-site versus trying to accommodate them on the campus. So right now, we have access to West Hall. We've got, we've got access to Central. But we're curious as to when we could take Central offline. We did do a visit, Sheila, to the former Rattarak College. They've got about 30 or 40 classrooms that are just sitting there vacant across the highway. It could be a potential temporary solution. We're, we've also investigated portable classrooms. Not exactly sure where we will put those on the campus, but we want to make sure that the kids are safe while we're getting the renovation done.
Okay, so with those 30, all the teachers and, and all the kids, their schedules would be happening at that site. I mean, there wouldn't be any back and forth to the high school, right?
No, ma'am, they wouldn't be shuttled, no, no.
Okay, okay. All right, I, I think that's all my, those are my questions. I'm fine. And I do appreciate your inclusion of other options around that 5 million dollars. Thank you for that, Mr. Robinson.
Mike, you got any questions?
No, I don't. The thorough presentation, and thanks for the detail.
Well, you know, I, I think, I think I've covered everybody, but the only thing I would say, as we're looking at the options for funding, my thinking is, is to look at Esser first, because we want to stay away from fund balances as much as we can, because we don't, we still don't know all the impacts from the, you know, the ADA around COVID and things like that. So, you know, we want to steer clear of our fund balances as much as we can. So if there are no other questions on the, on this particular item, can I get a motion to approve the selection of general contractors for East and Central renovation? I believe that was Lawler. So can I, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Ron has the motion. Who has the second?
Second.
Okay, Tony has the second. Is there any other additional conversation around this particular motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody contrary? Okay, the selective contractor has been approved. Can I, I would ask now for a motion to, to go from regular sessions into executive sessions for, for the purpose of personnel. Alex, can I get a roll call to make sure we got everybody?
Mr. Humphrey?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Neal?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Okay, at this point, this, this, we're gonna move from this meeting into executive session. So I would just ask that everybody would exit this link, come back in on the executive session link, and then we'll, we'll continue the executive session. come back in on the executive session link, and then we'll, we'll continue the executive session agenda. Uh, thank you all very much for your participation in this meeting, and I'm seeing you, uh, on the other link in just a second.